Good evening, everyone. And I'd like to welcome you to the Committee of the Whole Board Meeting. And we'll call to order this Committee of the Whole Board Meeting on Tuesday, December 10th, 2019 at 6:35 PM and ask for a roll call.
Mr. Kowski?
Here.
Ms. Feige?
Here.
Mr. Barron?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
And Dr. Moore?
Here. And now ask for visitor comments.
Ms. Conklin?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Kitty Conklin. I'm an Oak Park resident. Before you finalize your tax levy, I strongly encourage all of you to meet with our Oak Park Township Assessor, Ali El-Safar. Ali spoke at last night's Oak Park Township Board Meeting about what he sees and hears in his interactions with taxpayers, both in the home buying and selling process, along with through property tax appeals. Ali is, in my opinion, the most qualified Oak Park elected official to talk about the TIF expiration and its impact on taxpayers. From his comments, I was particularly struck by the fact that he said this year, the final year before next year's triennial reassessment, has been his department's busiest year. Normally, he commented, the final year before a triennial reassessment is his slowest. He has been dealing with taxpayers, property owner taxpayers, all year. But again, I encourage you to meet with him and share comments. You may or may not be aware that I began an online citizen-led petition about three weeks ago. This petition, asking each of the five TIF-affected boards, asks each of the five TIF-affected boards for property tax relief, and it now has 1,408 supporters. We really are asking the boards to provide tax relief to residents. Over the last 10-plus years, both runners and homeowners alike have funded the massive reserve which D-200 currently holds. We've done more than our share to fund current educational activities. You haven't suffered, nor have you wanted during the TIF period. Please do not ignore the citizens of our, all the citizens of our community. Regarding tonight's agenda, Policy 2:100, Board Member Conflict of Interest. As you complete first reading, I ask that you add language to the policy that addresses a board member's inherent conflict of interest by their either earning significant personal income from educational unions, or by being an active member or officer of an educational union, or organization that actively supports educational unions. The policy in its current form and as presented does not adequately identify to eliminate the risk to our community caused by conflict of interest. Thank you for your time and service to our community. Thank you.
Is there anyone who did not sign up for a comment that would like to do so? And I will move into our policy portion and turn it over to Dr. Prudential.
Policies for first read. I will go through them very quickly. If you have any questions after each one, I will pause. I'm only just going to speak to the identified changes that were made. So on the first one, 2:100, Board Member Conflict of Interest, the language that was added was tied to board members shall not participate in this election overboard, and this is through any means of getting money from a contract that they have personal relationships with, or family member has a personal relationship with, that the board member is a business partner, or an entity that employs, or is about to employ, the board member. And this is in compliance with the Grand Accountability and Transparency Act, otherwise known as GATT. So if there are any questions on that one. The next policy is the qualification for terms and duties, and this is Board Policy 2:100, and the new language is serve as, or is the role of the president, serves as, or can appoint to be the board's or special spokesperson, or assign someone else when it comes to media, and then they added a new line, that if the board president is subject to a complaint of sexual harassment, or witness or otherwise conflicted or violent, or qualified outside investigator, they can identify someone else to conduct that investigation. Any questions on that? The next one is the powers of the duties of the Board of Education's identification. And the new language added to this is in Board Policy 2:20, Powers and Duties of the Board of Education, and item number three, Employee Superintendent or other personnel making employment decisions, dismissing the person, including determining whether their employee, willingly or neglectfully failed to report an instance of suspected child abuse and neglect, as required under the Illinois School Code. The other language is that the acronym for Abuse and Neglect in Child Reporting Act is in line 19. Any questions on that one?
You are the last party in the conference.
It's not like he was on here, but they didn't hear anything. The next one is Board Meeting Procedures, and the language was, they took out the language of explanation, and added in the second paragraph, that an agenda as a consent, an agenda of these, of those items that usually do not require extensive discussion, is basically defined...
Welcome to the conference center.
What a consent item.
Please enter your conference ID and press the pound key.
And I'll just say that's how, that's how I operate now.
The next one is public participation in Board Meeting, and this is Board Policy 2:230, Public Participation, and it says, the new language is, for an overall minimum of 30 minutes during, each regular and special board meeting, any person may comment to or ask questions to the board, which is public participation, subject to reasonable constraints established and recorded in this policy's guidelines below. During the public participation, there's a minimum of 20 minutes total length of time when any one subject, excuse me, when public participation takes less time than that, then you can close out the public comments section. To preserve sufficient time, the board can conduct its business, and they list the ways of doing that. In bullet point two, excuse me, it says, the person needs to identify themselves and be brief, that the time for one person to address the board in public comments is limited to three minutes, and that that person should speak that one time, but may be allowed to speak more times than that. Well, in the brief, they want to come back around in a different time. And number three says, when necessary and appropriate, that's the new language, the time for each person to address the board during participation, to convene, in convenience of time, to conserve time, may be limited, we may limit the number of people who speak. And then in bullet point B, the expansion of the overall minimum of 30 minutes for public participation, and/or the 20-minute minimum total length of time for one subject, and/or, if you go down to the next line, it is basically determination of how to proceed regarding public participation, is governed by Board Policy. So we have the latitude to adjust that. And this is in compliance with the open meeting standard. Any questions on that one?
Just want to clarify, what I think would be a clarifying remark is that these minimums are stated as minimums when there's an intense public interest in speaking on a topic. So someone speaks for two minutes, we won't make them talk for 18 more minutes. I don't know about some of this, but this is, you know, I think a lot of people expect to see the word maximum there, but this is in light of some real intensive topics.
The next one is Policy 4:150, Facilities Management and Building Programs, and the only change to that is, they put in the School Code statute tied to Equitable Restrooms Act, and what this says is that school districts have to identify any single-use restrooms as gender-neutral. The next one is Employee Ethics and Code of Conduct, and it is similar to that of the Board Members Code of Conduct. Any questions? The drug and alcohol-free workplace, e-cigarette and cannabis prohibition policy, they added the language for e-cigarettes and for cannabis, and also inserted information about that person appears to be impaired, that distribution and consumption are being impaired, are under the influence in the presence or on the district premises while performing work is basically not allowed. And then if you go down further, it talks about the purpose of this policy is that on district premises means workplaces defined as in compliance with CRTA, and that the rules and regulations hold that even if it is a district event offsite, it is still a district event, and cannabis is not permitted, or e-cigarettes. And then there's the stipulation with the time to conduct the investigation and so forth. And then that other line, line six was added, that we have to remind employees that Policy 6:60, Curriculum Content, requires the district to educate students depending upon their grade about drug and substance abuse prevention, and the relationship between drugs, alcohol and cannabis. It says cannabis shall have the meaning as provided in the school code and law under CRTA, and e-cigarettes, there's a definition for what e-cigarettes are. And then if you go down further, there's the disclaimer that the board reserves the right to interpret, revise, or discontinue any provisions of this policy pursuant to the suspension of policies contained in the Policy 2:240. And I will say that there are some things, one of the recommendations is that you seek legal counsel, and so we are seeking legal counsel on how to address situations should there arise with employees.
And in terms of our education, the component about students, where are we seeing that?
Mr. Johnson?
Sure.
I know that we have, one of our individuals, Ms. Calabuti, works diligently along with one of our school social workers to educate our students to get the information out on the deals of vaping, the deals of e-cigarettes, the deals of the drugs. The question is, in terms of our curriculum?
Yeah, where are we continuing to educate about cannabis and those types of things? It's in our health curriculum, okay? And so I touched base with Clay Reagan in the vision of that to say, to ask if this would make, you know, result in any changes in the curriculum. As far as just what cannabis is, of course, there aren't changes in that. But there is going to be a communication about what the new law, particularly this year, whether this is a permanent part of the curriculum, we aren't sure, but communicate on exactly what this new law really does mean and what it does not mean. He was in the process of talking with his teachers about how that looks.
And in terms of the, I'm a little, I guess, e-cigarettes have been a part of prior policies, so the re-highlighting of it is interesting to me, that has nothing to do with what we do, but, but in terms of like our employee manual, as well as our Code of Conduct, do these things warrant any changes in those?
The addition of the cannabis stuff.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, for our manuals for employees, you're asking, right?
For employees, it's already in the student handbook.
Yeah, yeah, it wouldn't change the student handbook at all. Yeah, that's true.
So then there would have to be that, according to the policy, the requisite training or education for staff as well?
Absolutely.
And we wanted to bring the Policy 4 prior to the law, Mark, into our question.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, good.
It can be, since it's already somewhere in terms of communication, I think it'd be really helpful for the community as a whole, have communication so families know what there's, sons and daughters can and can't do here, to what degree the law change does or doesn't change what's been done to this point. So I think it's just very important to be clear. I know other governing bodies, through ICAU, there was a question that came up recently about what each body's doing in response to that, and so whatever it is that we may come up with, I think it'd be important to make sure that our tax and bodies know as well, and maybe it'd help just create less gaps of knowledge.
Yeah, sure. So you're saying what it means for how we are handling infractions in the school, should they arise, and also how we're communicating it out to our students through education?
Right, and I don't know if it'd be an FAQ, whatever the mode would be, but, because there's different distinctions that are drawn here in terms of medical cannabis and other things which are really important, so you'll understand. So medical cannabis, what it does or does not enable to have a license to, you know, have a medical permit to smoke, or to ingest in some way, and there's a lot of language here that this language refers to that's not here, but it's in, I believe, an Illinois code. That could also be helpful link for people if I have the right link, so that people, you know, can follow the bouncing ball and the ins and outs of all this. That's, that's just one person, so we'll make sure that that's the overall board direction.
That's an excellent point. Thank you. Tom?
Yeah, Tom, excuse me. Clarification. Dr. Prudential, you mentioned something about, you know, consulting with our legal counsel. My, my question really stems from, in the document, it referenced symptoms, and, you know, how we truly assess, and then I saw some reference to something, you know, within Colorado or other states are doing, that might be, is that going to work its way into our document, or how is that all going to work?
It could quite possibly work its way in. What they suggest is referring to your legal, what they refer to, referring to our legal counsel with regards of when we have probable suspicion that a person may be under the influence, how and when we decide to take them to get the drug tested is one, and we're also seeking legal guidance regarding medical marijuana, and what that looks like, but what you send us about what's happening in Colorado could quite possibly find its way into our policy.
What?
Procedure.
Procedure.
So what's, I mean, we're, this is for first read, so...
This is for first read.
Procedurely, how, how would that work? Because it sounds like, and I know we want to get this in place prior to the law, but with, how would that fit?
Once the policy is approved, then we can automatically now start to amend the procedure. Is that the...
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand chronologically.
I seem a little confused, because frankly, the, the new cannabis law, it shouldn't affect anything, right? It was the medical that would have been a big change, and it made it legal within a school. I mean, this is just going to be like anything else, cigarettes, or alcohol, or any other drug, right? I mean, it's not allowed, period?
That is true, but right now, we don't have a really strong procedure for when we drug test.
Oh, I see.
And so it allows us to really look at the symptoms and that we see to make an informed decision when we do that.
So then, back to Tom's question, how do we get the language about the course of action we're going to take into the policy?
Are you talking, the procedure is the aspect of the steps that we take?
Right, but to clarify what triggers that.
Oh, that's what we, that's part of the information we get from legal, what would trigger that for us, and then we can bring it and have it inserted in the policy and send it to the board. Prior to second.
Okay. Because one other question that I had has to do with the, the fact that it says no employee during the course of their work, and yet with medical marijuana, I mean, I'm not talking about alcohol, or, I mean, that's the one that triggers all of this. How is that something that we enforce?
She went to one of the legal sessions on it, so she would have more information.
I've been to quite a few, because it's new for all of us, but all the legal recommendation is to really treat cannabis as you would treat alcohol and tobacco. So medical would be any other drug. You can't take drug, but you cannot count work under the influence of drug. If something prevents you from fulfilling your essential job functions, even if you have medical card, there is proof that you're not able to perform your essential job duties, that would disqualify you from being at work. So if there is a legitimate medical need, then you would treat it as a legal absence until the person gets better, and if there is a proof that it affects their job performance.
But, you know, from a testing standpoint, are they different? Meaning that for alcohol, you can test blood alcohol, and if it's greater than a certain percentage, it indicates that within a certain period of time, there's that consumption. With marijuana, it's not the same, and with other things, they're not the same, so I'm, you know, from a...
But you wouldn't just randomly test, you would have to have reasonable suspicion that it is, and there is a checklist of what would trigger it, so there has to be some sort of impairment that is observed, and that's why we're looking to tighten our procedures of how we would go about it if there is a reasonable suspicion, and that that's what we're working with legal. But that does not have to be part of the policy, that is in our administrative procedures, which will be communicated to the office.
So, I just want to make sure I'm clear, we're saying all of the same level, alcohol, e-cigarettes, tobacco, cannabis?
Yes. That's where my question comes in, then. So if there's not medical alcohol use, and there's not medical e-cigarette use, but there's medical marijuana use, so, so this, this piece here, is this different than the separate piece that accounts for the medical, like you just mentioned, or is it included in here?
There's a statement in this policy that references medical, but where we have to begin to determine is, once we have reasonable suspicion and evidence of procedure, the steps that we take.
Yeah, and medical is really nothing new, medical's been in place for a while. So likewise, somebody could be, could be on a different type of medication that affects their executive functioning. So while it's not illegal to have it, that person would not be able to fulfill their job effectively. Then we would seek to put that person on leave until they get better and can function properly. So likewise, it would be the same course of action with medical cannabis.
Stay tuned. Thanks, Jason.
The next one is the school calendar and the day, and this policy, this is Policy 620, and it was just updated to include the legal reference that addresses the number of hours it takes to have a full school day, which is five, that opens the use of e-learning in certain circumstances, and so it just has the reference that was updated.
Yes. So it opens the e-learning, but does this then, by insertion of that, then that means that e-learning can be implemented?
Yes. And so as a district, we've already started that conversation about e-learning, and we're piloting it this summer in preparation for how we can set it up next winter when we have show days. Initially, when e-learning came about, the state of Illinois only granted the pilot for two districts, and so they actually sent out something to us last month, that districts down at the latitude to apply to do e-learning. And you're not just restricted to the pilot schools, but you have to have a formalized process that you use on how you attract attendance, not only the certified teachers, but also the support staff as well, in terms of time of doing their work. There has to be a process for how lessons are uploaded, a process for the time that the teachers are accessible to students electronically, in order to communicate with them on the work that's being done. It can't just be the same lesson for every e-day, it has to be something different, it's tied to the district's curriculum.
So, question and comment. The question is then, this, so just so that I'm clear, this is where the board has then a say in whether e-learning is permissible?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess my comment is, or question, is, is e-learning tied to anything, you know, I'm looking at it and saying, one, we have low teacher attendance, two, we have on our, you know, on our technological update of how we're advancing, we lag in certain areas, and yet we're saying then we're going to allow e-learning. It's like, we're, we're less student interface, and we haven't yet demonstrated competence from a faculty standpoint, or it's a lagging area, yet we're allowing it to be done online. So I am questioning where we're going.
There's also no stipulations to how districts implement e-learning. The two pilot programs that initially launched e-learning were in lieu, when they were inclement, with weather days, and students couldn't attend school, rather than lose that time of instruction electronically, it allows for that, but the districts have the latitude to determine how e-learning days are used, and how e-learning is used. There are some districts in other states that do e-learning just as a kid is homebound. They use them if there's a kid who's abroad, and there's a course that that student can't take where they are, they use it that way. As a district, we would have the latitude to determine how we use it.
Yeah, before the guidance document came, came out from the state that Dr. Prudential is referring to, there was this brief little window where the ADA language was gone, the new EBF funding language wasn't placed, and as a result, summer school and other types of, well, places where student attendance days was managed by on-seat attendance language was out of the state code, and there were several state schools in this area that took advantage of that to experiment with e-learning programming. Right around there, there were several that we had in contact with, and they'd done some really good things. What we've learned from that is that now there's this new guidance in place with pilots that governs during the school year implementation, but we had this digital literacy class during the summer, and we figured that's the best place to work with this, because e-learning directly feeds into the content area of that class. And so we're going to work with that this summer a little bit to see how it goes, continue to learn from what those other schools have done, one of them, I believe, is piloting. And as we move into subsequent years, the types of questions that you're bringing up are ones that we're going to have to consider as we move forward. So there are no concrete plans, just we have to go there with our eyes wide open, and see what we can do to scale this up and forward, so.
What, what, what has been learned from those pilots that may address the questions that Tom raised?
Well, yeah, I mean, for a really comprehensive answer, I have to go pull some stuff together, but I remember talking to the principal of one of the other schools, and it actually was at the tail end of last year, and he said the real challenge I had initially wasn't ensuring that quality work was actually getting done during that time. So it's not just a matter of monitoring attendance, things like the activity... So it's not just a matter of monitoring attendance, things like the activity in place and whether this system you can figure it out. And, you know, you're proxy for attendance, right? Who's logging in and how's that working? But when you're talking about snow days, the challenge that, that he and I were talking about is that you don't necessarily have a ready arsenal, you can't have a ready arsenal of immediately relevant activities to roll out to your kids that links to what you did yesterday, right, as, as a teacher? And so what types of activities can be put in place? E-learning activities can be put in place in the school district that are going to be relevant for our kids, that are going to feed real-time learning in that class, and also be ready on a moment's notice. That's where the, the learning curve exists. So that's, that's, anyway, the conversation I had there was.
You know, snow day is like, yay.
Yeah, totally.
I, I wonder with all the things that you just said about quality, as well as all the, you know, almost literally having to be ready at a moment's notice, if that is the best use of e-learning for snow days? If it's like, unless there was something where triggered, if there were two or three in a row or something like that. But for one snow day, I just wonder how that would even be a meaningful way to say?
We would have the latitude for that. I will say I sent in a presentation where there were superintendents who, two superintendents from different parts of the state have partnered on e-learning. And they took over a year to plan. But one of the things that they, they had to work out, as I said, the time that teachers need to clock on and be accessible via technology to students, the amount of time that, there was a way they put into the systems where students actually had to, through their Chromebooks or whatever device the school had given to them, log in so that we knew that they were there in order to take attendance. And that they had a system where they would, if they knew the night before that there was going to be an e-learning date, they had so much time to upload the lessons they had planned for that day so that students could have access to it. The struggle for them was the support staff piece. What do they do on that day off? Because not all support staff can do their jobs virtually from home. The downside, though, is they also shared with us ISBID, Illinois State Board of Education, that there was one school who said it was an e-day and had not planned. And they said it's an e-day and wants everybody a hundred percent attendance. And I think that's why they put the guidelines in to ensure that that no longer happens. This, you know, we can have further discussion, we can actually pull this until we are at a point in the school system, the school district, that we want to approve it. We were bringing it forward because we, for us, we thought, okay, this one's really doable because we've been having the conversation about e-learning, you know, some, for some time now. And Mr. Dean, Chris back there, has looked into it to see the ins and outs of it and learn it. And so maybe it would be helpful, before we bring it back to the board, is we try to solidify a plan and bring that to you first.
It's more of a comment. The, the, the e-learning days that I've seen be used, I've not, I've not seen it in a high school setting. So what I'm curious about is like, you know, how many classes, how many teachers, like that? Like, do they run through their schedule? Is it, you know, like, there's so many logistic pieces of it that make me have questions about it.
Sure.
I can follow up with, because the people that I sent in were high school. Okay. And so in Lydon High School's one, is that it? I can follow up with that.
And I guess another comment that I have is, given, before we get too far down the road of planning, if this is something that requires some level of board approval, I would want the, the, the fact that, the question, I guess, presented to our faculty as well, is this something that feels doable, given all of the other curriculum and instructional changes we have coming in the next couple of years?
You, you make a good point. We had some surface level discussion with the chair of the faculty center, but not since we've had some of these new things coming down the line. So there's, we've not had a follow-up conversation. So I, I agree with you, that would be warranted.
And it is a, a matter, my caution, I guess, is, is this the, the best use of our resources, both human as, as well as other, given that typically we have one or two snow days a year? And if that's the driver for, you know, something like this happening, it does seem as though there are, and I'm really kind of going around the questions that you brought forward, Tom, and you too, Gina, in terms of high school today, but also what it would mean in terms of staff training and the, the technology piece. Because I don't think we've had an update lately about, you know, without one-to-one, you know, the, the teacher training part.
Oh, Bright Bites?
No, well, it's part Bright Bites, but also, I don't know, the technology instructors this year.
Oh, season?
Yeah. So that piece, because there have been, you know, we have not, since we implemented that, our, the trajectory of mastery has been slower than we anticipated.
Christine's here in terms of.
I see it.
No, just Matt Bigmark, I believe this will be referring to, he's our, he's our teacher leader. And we do have on the, on the planned presentations for January to have a regular ed tech update, including Bright Bites information, which speaks to some of the questions that I hear asked here.
Yeah, so then, Dr. Prudential, to your point, I think the questions that are being raised, all of the, well, sorry, before we.
Absolutely.
For approval.
So we will not bring this forward.
Uh, next one, Greg, we're going to just, there we are. Is the graduation requirement for policy six colon three hundred, beginning the next school year, it is required that all students, all seniors fill out FAFSA. They either fill out FAFSA or they apply for some state aid. If they choose not to, they can, they have the option of requesting a waiver. But there has to be some dialogue with each senior. Do you go out in financial aid prior to graduation? That is now part of a graduation requirement. If a district does not have the conversation with all, so if there's either not a FAFSA form, a state financial aid form, or a waiver, then the district has to write a statement saying that we attempted to have the conversation and get those things completed by a hundred percent of our seniors. The other.
Just, um, in, on, on number six, where it talks about student, is it, is it set from requiring a gift? And number two references the building principle? And I would just suggest that we.
Change that language. Change it as we mean or whatever. And then the, the other addition to that is the service member diploma. And it just says that we can award a diploma to a service member who was killed in action while performing active duty with the United States armed forces.
I, I don't really have a, well, I guess it is a question that, um, this FAFSA business is interesting because it takes some doing to get the FAFSA completed. And having completed it for a number of like students that I mentor, and the documentation that's required to have them, the families to be able to do that. Is this not, I mean, I understand, I, I feel like I can understand where they were coming from with the idea to do this. My concern is actually getting that done.
Well, we have, each district has a person who is assigned to them to help get this done. There's a role of the counselors to refer the students to that person for additional support if the counselors aren't able to get them up there.
So that someone is assigned from ISBID?
Yes.
To help with this process for each school district?
I think the person is from ISBID, I'm quoting, and then, oh, yeah. We have someone who is assigned to.
Assigned to help with this.
Right. And Ms. Parker, who's over the council and the social workers, has been made aware of this individual and is encouraging the counselors to get, not to wait till the eleventh hour to get students in, but to start now. So the goal is you start at the onset of school with that process.
Are you graduating, how many in the graduating class of twenty twenty-one?
There'll be about eight hundred and sixty, seventy, something like that.
And that's the responsibility of the counselors to, to help ensure that, yeah, they all get the FAFSA.
Yes, one of theirs.
In accordance to ISBID, yes.
And do we have information on what our rate of students completing FAFSA prior to this?
Yeah, you know, I, I know I heard it earlier this year. I'm sorry, but I don't want to hazard a guess.
That would be helpful.
It's not, it's not, you know, above something like seventy percent. It's, it's a lot lower than that, so I don't need to make sure.
Because the other piece of this, and it goes a little bit to Gina's point, it is not the, necessarily the straightforward process, but there's, you're doing with twins. You think that you just have to do it once.
You can do it.
Right? No, just, they don't always, it's, they don't always assume that you're doing it with the best intentions. I'll just put it that way. But we've had students in the past, there's an education component here that isn't addressed. I don't know if ISBID's addressing, but we have to address it because there are families that, and I'm thinking of several students from this past year, whose families refused to fill out, you know, FAFSA forms because they did not understand what it meant. They thought it meant their child going into debt. And so compliance, unless on the back end, we're just ready to write a hundred letters as to why, you know, how many kids didn't do it. But there's an education component here that's, exceeds what we're doing now.
It, it really does. We talked about adding it to our, our, our nights, right, that we have a family. That doesn't even begin, it covers the breadth of what you're really speaking to. So, yeah, there's, there's work at that level. There's, there's one-on-one work or small group work that's needed in the school that's going to take time to get these filled out during that, you know, time as well. So there's, there's a lot of space and time that's required to make this work.
And for the counselors, it would be helpful to understand how, you know, how this has been done before? Yeah, to, to understand how many counselors have been doing this as a matter of course. And what our perceives are. Is it, is it required that they do that?
Let me work with Linda Parker. All right. And Director of Student Services, and get a, kind of a summary explaining the process and plans and that out for.
When you send it in a little bit.
When you get it through the other week notes. Because I do think that, and I'm thinking too, that we have several, two board members that aren't here this evening.
Right.
And so to have that additional information prior to moving this forward.
Okay.
I'll see if I can get it this week.
I think that will just probably.
I have a couple, I have a couple of questions. So, first of all, I think from the scholarship foundation standpoint, there's merit because this will help, this will help, you know, get the information for those students that are truly needing and, and, and can get resources. So that's the positive side I see to this. You know, the, the challenge is, I think, you know, I, or I read it, there's an opt-out, or what is it, a, a waiver? And that process needs to be made simple. I don't know what it looks like, but a FAFSA does include a lot of information that some people may choose not to want to share it, right? And they need that right.
But I would say that right only if they have the correct information.
Yes.
And that's where it gets to be a slippery slope, yeah.
We'll, we'll come back with, with the information that's been requested. And then the last policy under community relations is eight colon thirty, visitors too and conduct on school property. It's similar to the drug and alcohol, e-cigarette, cannabis abuse prohibitive policy in that the visitors cannot be on school campus or at school sanctioned events under the influence of, and impaired by any alcoholic beverages, cannabis, or other unlawful products.
I'm sorry, I was laughing at number fourteen, which talks about engaging in any risky behavior, including rollerblading while we're skating.
The skateboard.
Like we went back in time.
So if I am hearing the board correctly, we are actually pulling the graduation requirement for FAFSA until we get you the additional information. And we are pulling the school year calendar with the e-learning component. Thank you. Now to the fun part of the agenda. We move to instruction, and we have a presentation from two of our students. Three forty-one of their civics projects for a student mural. For policy seven colon twelve, racial equity states OPRF HS values the racial and ethnic diversity of its students and recognizes that an educational environment in which diversity is respected and valued contributes to successful educational outcomes for all of our students. And so today, we have a presentation from Lizzie, that's Elizabeth, and from Gia. And they are going to present to you today their proposed student mural project called OPRF To Me.
In our civics class, we had to do a civic learning project.
Do you mind?
Yeah, just pull yours on.
You need to turn yours on, Lizzie.
And we were inspired to make a mural where each student can express themselves in their own identity. So rather than other murals, it wouldn't be select few students, but each person would be able to contribute to it. It would look something like this. We would have a top banner with the OPRF To Me, and each student will get to paint a self-portrait, and they'll all come together and paint. So for a project, we were told to choose an issue we were passionate about, or something that happened to us. And the person that popped into my head was last year, when all the Katie Phillips, E.T. came to our school. And being both Jewish and African-American, it really hurt me, and I didn't feel welcome here. And I just wanted a way to make everyone feel included. And then I saw the story about the Julian mural that lacked diversity and how they made a new one. And I thought that we should do something like that here, where each student can contribute themselves and have their own identity in. And I think it art, so artistically combats the graffiti.
We also both thought that a mural in the school embracing diversity would complement the detracking that is going to occur at OPRF. And we plan to choose about a hundred and ten artists to paint a one foot by one foot self-portrait. And we will be selecting students from applicants based on their artistic ability, their individuality, and their creativity.
For the application, we ask that they email our Gmail account, oprstudentmural@gmail.com, with a painting they've created, so we can judge their artistic ability. And prefer a face, but it's not necessary because we understand that not everyone has painted a self-portrait before. And here's the link to the recruitment wire.
Click that, it'll come over you, click that. It's a little small, you want to read it to them?
Sure. It says, "Do you want to paint a self-portrait for a school, school mural? Email oprstudent."
At gmail dot com.
At gmail dot com. From your student email with a painting you've created, preferably a portrait, attached for a chance to have your artwork featured in a mural that truly reflects OPRF diversity. Applications must be submitted by December twentieth, which we're not sure about the actual date. We are totally flexible to changing the date that the applications will go.
So the location we. So the location we've chosen is the east end of the second floor south hallway. It is near the driver's ed room, if you guys know where that is, and each wall is thirty by ten feet. And we're hoping that after the OPRF Imagine project, we can move into the cafeteria, we'll be more prominently displayed.
For materials, we are hoping to receive some excess materials from the art department, and whatever we cannot receive from them, we are totally open to fundraising, to find those art materials, and also pledging our own money. And we have other people who have agreed to pledge money, and we were even thinking about starting GoFundMe. And for the materials, we would need a cotton canvas, which would be approximately ninety-five dollars. We are looking to do a tapestry, and we also would need acrylic paint, which we also think that we could receive from art programs within the school. And students who would participate in this mural would likely have some of their own materials that they would like to use, maybe even prefer to use, from what we would supply. But we would want to make sure that everybody who wants to participate can participate with materials if they don't already have them. And we also were planning on having needles and thread, possibly from the clothing construction at OPRF, so we could sew the tapestry together.
So we would have two murals, each would be six foot by ten foot, and they would all be made of stone together, one foot by one foot pieces of canvas that each of the students made. With the hundred and ten portraits, there'd be a one foot by ten foot top banner, which would say OPRF To Me, and this advised by the fire code, because it has less than twenty percent wall coverage. We ensure that by creating multiple murals on each wall to maximize the space, and it will be two feet down from the ceiling. So for our first meeting, we will discuss the project dates, the specifications, and distribute all the supplies to everyone. And then we have two other workshops, where students can work together and access the supplies that they wouldn't have at home to work on it. Except I think the most important one would be workshop number three. This would be required, because all the students would come together, they'd meet each other, create an environment where you could meet new people, and they'd all work together to sew their canvases. And then it would just kind of make one great piece, and I think it really reflects the mission of this whole project. And then here's a timeline. We understand it is very strict, and we are open to changing it up, but this is just a general idea of how it should look. All right. Any questions?
My question is, I know I wouldn't qualify because of my lack of artistic ability, so I'm out. But how are you going to assure that your hundred and ten or number is really representative of the school demographics?
We are going to talk to each of our classes and try to encourage as many people as possible to attend in all of our classes, so that we can get more of the student population. And then we will create a rubric that will make it more efficient when we're choosing, so we'll remain unbiased.
And if we cannot receive a hundred and ten applicants, we are open to possibly using other pieces of artwork in place of the portraits, other things that represent OPRF.
I had a question. If you don't get a hundred and ten applicants, do you have some teachers that you could work with that would potentially make suggestions of students that could be involved in the project?
Yes, we're working with Mr. Van Dijven right now, and he agreed to talk to all of his art students about it. And then I also plan on making trips to each art classroom and art club to talk about it.
And they're also supported by this BISB.
And if I could just make one suggestion, I love the creativity and all the thought that you put into this, and it's great. I would just perhaps encourage you to also reach out to maybe Ms. Rantz or somebody in the special ed department to make sure that we're really being inclusive of all of our students.
Of course. Thank you for the suggestion.
I think this is such a well-prepared presentation and clearly well-thought-out. And in terms of, I had a question about the selection process. So you two would decide who gets to participate, is that?
Yes.
Okay. And the, one suggestion, and this comes from years of thinking that people are just going to do things real fast, sometimes it takes people a little time, so the application process, don't be daunted if it trickles in a little bit at first. So you may want to just allow yourself a little more time, maybe for that part, and once it gets going, things move a lot faster, but allow yourself that marketing, you know, time and talking to different people to make sure you do get the kind of representation. And I'm blanking on the name of the teacher that's done murals.
Mr. Van Dijven, and you're speaking of...
Lobby Rayman.
Lobby Rayman.
Yeah, I would suggest speaking with him. I mean, I've seen, he's an artist, and history and English, I think, are his area.
He is one of the people we talked about when we first met, and I've had a couple of hidden meetings with him. But Mr. Van Dijven is the one who also did the murals at Percy Julian, and so he is supporting them, and he also said he would reach out to Lobby Rayman. I do want, if I might, in support of the young ladies, when we talked, we talked about the fact that, as you said, the applications may come in slow because we're going into finals week, we talked about their timeline, and so they have looked at the potential of going to spring break if need be.
I just wanted to add.
It really is wonderful. And one of the things that I really love about is that workshop three and requiring everybody to sew together, because there's real beauty in everybody coming together. It feels like a very community-wide engagement, and so thank you for that.
And, oh, I'm sorry.
OPRFToMe.org is available for $10.99 if you have any URL in mind. But I'm just encouraging you to think of ways to have this go beyond our community to the world, because we have another something to me that's out there, and this may or may not be in direct response to that, but...
Are you talking America today?
I am indeed.
We could say it outside.
I know, I just wanted to test your recognition, you were right on it. And so I just think there's a lot of potential on social media, obviously, and I don't need to preach to two very smart teenagers about how to push this out through those channels, but I think it would be a great opportunity. It could go to other schools, potentially.
But first, we appreciate that what you want to do is have a hundred and ten students within these walls that are ready to do this. Is there, what is the board's...
They wanted to present it to the board. At one point, we thought they would be asking for money, but we think they'll get the ninety-five dollars. The art department has graciously said they will make sure that they give them what they need. They talked about the wood piece to put it all on, so we think we've got that covered. They just wanted to share, so there's no, when it's done, I'm hoping they'll come back and show it.
Please, we hope you can be invited to the unveiling, like, it seems like that's another really beautiful event, so we'd love to be invited to that.
By the time the new cafeteria is done, they will have, because Lizzie's a senior, Lizzie's a senior, and Gia's a junior, they'll be gone, but I encourage them to come back when it's placed in the cafeteria.
And thank you truly for turning, you know, your personal story of what was traumatic and sad into something truly beautiful. I totally appreciate it, and I'm honored for that, so thank you.
Thank you so much for hearing our presentation.
It's the best part of it, right? Exactly. A testament to what Oak Park is, what you're doing, right? We always have these conversations about Oak Park needs to be a community and what's required in that, and what's required of us and what's required of the people, the other adults, and you're demonstrating that in spades, so thank you.
And we'll touch base, then we'll get together after winter break, to get your finals and stuff done, and kind of see where we're going. Thank you.
Thank you.
You got it. Thank you.
I think we should have dropped it.
I see some proud smiles in the audience. I might have worked it here. My day is complete. So the next item is the presentation of the district dashboard, the district data dashboard debut. As you know, last December, the administration presented to the Board of Education information regarding the development of a data framework. We kind of talked about the awareness level, and then the implementation level, and so presenting tonight, Mr. Greg Johnson, Associate Superintendent, Mr. Chris Payne, Senior Director of Educational Technology, I believe Karen Ury, and Christian Foun, they're also in the audience, waving their hand. They put in a lot of time and energy into what we're going to show you tonight. Our hope is to go live lives in January, but we wanted to give the morning opportunity of what's to come. This is for discussion and information. It is in compliance with priority two, transformative education, and board policy, board volunteer. Gentlemen.
All right. Well, with that little introduction, that's very left for me to say, but we have introduction into the presentation. I do want to stress, the first thing you said, this is the product of work of a lot of people, and Christian and Karen behind us have been fabulous collaborators with this. They have really put in countless hours. They have been exceedingly patient with yaplets and countless changes, so.
They, they... I just also want to echo that they were working, and I said, no, I need to review it, and, I mean, just whatever, they've been through a lot of hoops.
They really have.
They knew something, they had a lot of inputs, and they seem to have worked through the majority of those inputs. I just want to tell them that time is here.
Yeah, and we have, Chris and I were talking earlier today, and we have learned a lot throughout this process, and we continue to learn a lot throughout this process, with them and to their frustration in some ways, but also in ways that are already forcing us to, or encouraging us to think forward about how we want to see this kind of evolve and grow and be effectively used for the community at large and the internal community in the school looking forward. I'm going to talk a little bit, when we're done, when we're done, of kind of giving an overview of where some of that learning is pointing us. For right now, I just want to just remind everybody, right, of the Julian cover letter, but I just want to remind everybody, this really does come out of the work that we began last year, smart our data framework. And what we're seeing presented today is really the first way to kind of capture the type of data that is generally universally agreed upon in the state of Illinois as a way to describe the overall health of a school district, specifically as it relates to students and how they are performing and existing in a school. So I'm going to turn this over to Chris now to kind of navigate through the different elements of it, as it does and will appear on our website, and then we'll talk about some future directions before we go down to questions.
Thank you. So just to take you through, essentially what we're trying to do is make this as easy to navigate as possible, which given the amount of reports, the various places that those reports are held, we wanted to create a landing page. And on your presentation, this is actually linked, so that you can go to the landing page itself. This is online and active. Now on that landing page are three important areas. You have the Illinois School Report Card, you have the Strategic Dashboard, and you have the Interactive Dashboard. Illinois State Report Card is Iowa SISB's collection of our data that we report up to them. They put it into their format, so we wanted to have like one stop place where you can navigate there, see what they have as a comparison point as you're looking at the other reports that we have. So the next one that we have on that landing page is the Strategic Dashboard. And this was a tool that was given by ISB, where we can put distinctive elements of our website or of our district data. I'm going to take you there to show you what that looks like. So on that landing page gives you a little narrative about what you can find, and then we have an indicators page, which is a district snapshot. Oops, I'm sorry, you're not seeing the same thing I am, are you?
No.
Let's see if I can...
This is Craig, I have a question.
Yep.
You got a question?
Yes.
Is there a, is there a place I can find this website? Is there a link on the school OPRF site, or is that an interlink or still?
I'm sorry, I guess what he could do, if you have your board item, and you click on the link, it'll take you to it. But it's not...
The link in the, in the board item.
In the board item.
When you click down to the presentation, if you click on the landing page, it'll take you somewhere. If you click on the Illinois State Report Card, it'll take you, and if you click on the Strategic Dashboard that he's looking at now, it'll take you to, welcome to Strategic Dashboard.
Yeah, the Interactive Dashboard is the only one that's not currently active yet. As you can see on the presentation, January seventh is when we planned the unveiling for that. So now we've got that in front of us, we're going to take this to the indicators. Here we go. We can see the district snapshot with some basic information, numbers that literally plugged in. There's not a dataset behind this, this is reports that are done based on the Illinois State Report Card, and we put that information into this page. This also gives us a platform that we can use to give an idea of where we are for our various priorities within the strategic plan. So for instance, priority one, racial equity, we have under that each of the subsections that we've identified as important. So it gives you a quick synopsis of where we're at with that work with each one of those priorities. I'm going to use the presentation itself. Yeah, so it's, rather than, within this, it's not really broken down into things that compute into percentages. So it's a review of the work that's been done in this particular area, considering kind of subjectively where we are within that work, and then placing a number for that. So this number up here, fifty percent, isn't a direct computation between these, we have to do that ourselves. So we figure out where we believe we are within each one of these areas, and then use that as, to give us some sort of sense of how much of the work we've completed in each one of those areas, which one of those, each one of those priorities.
And for those listening at home, Craig, he's talking about the percentage that's in the gray circle is not a direct computation from the percentages directly beneath it that are next to the blue bar graphs.
That's it. You get that if you click on the strategies.
Let me use this. The next section that I wanted to talk about is our Interactive Dashboard. This is the one that really, Karen Ury is a great whiz at it, Christian has been really good at helping us kind of frame what this looks like, and concepts were brought to us as to how data, what we wanted to see within a variety of areas. Some of those areas, or all of those areas actually, those areas of focus are listed on that next slide. So graduation rate, students on track, attendance, discipline, student achievement, student performance, participation, student participation, college career, and climate data. Then within each one of those focus areas, there are filters that can be applied. So gender, race, ethnicity, special ed status, economically disadvantaged in Section 504. I'm going to show you on this next page how that would work. So for instance, if I go to graduation rate within the Interactive Dashboard, I have what we finally call a widget up here, which is a small report that gives you the statistics for that particular dataset. Within that dataset, you can then filter by the above. So if I wish to see female, and I want to... So if I wish to see female, and I want to filter by special education or any of these additional filters here, I can add those, and the data will change. Now, on some of those pages, the way that we wanted it presented, or was requested of us to present it, is already by race. So you can see on these pie charts, you have a racial demographic breakdown already within the pie chart itself. In those cases, the race, ethnicity filter isn't going to have an effect, but the other filters will. So on January 7th, this page will be live. And you'll be able to go through each one of these sections and for yourself, filtered by these various demographic categories. That's a bare bones mechanics view of the dashboard as it stands. Are there any questions on the mechanical aspects of it before we get into some of the more practical matters?
The last thing I'll say is by conversations that we've had in several places, conversations that we've had with several of you, conversations that we have seen in CCB conversations where this was reviewed and discussed, conversations internally that we have had regarding our strategic plan that go back, you know, for quite a while. We recognize that, you know, even by the way this was designed, this is really meant as kind of a scatter shot of data. And I don't mean just like a random scatter shot. This is data that the state generally agrees upon, and schools generally use to describe their success. But it really is, it's data out there, right? It's not specifically aligned to our key indicators that we are using to determine success as defined by those priorities that we've identified as most critical for our strategic plan. And so one of the conversations that we are beginning to have is how we can communicate those types of top priorities within this out to the community. So it is really linked to those top priorities that we really have as an organization. That's work in progress. Those are conversations that we are having. But we do know that is absolutely critical for our work moving forward, and critical for a number of initiatives that we have. Think about the work that we are doing for the sort of practices. Think about the work that we are doing with the professional curriculum in a variety of other areas. We need to talk about those types of data points that are the true end games, what success looks like for those initiatives. And it's not necessarily, you know, everything we see up here that speaks to social emotional learning, or everything up here that might speak to academic performance. It's really just some of those. So that's work that is in progress, and really what are key learnings as we move forward.
And this is also, you're seeing the public side of this. This tool has an internally facing component that we're actively pursuing to see how to leverage that best to give a dashboard that can focus to particular groups, so they can use that current information to guide their practices and their implementation of their programs as well. Any other questions?
Craig? Yeah, this is Craig. Yeah, so Craig, I appreciate you describing that. My one concern with this was that we lacked that, what we were short, the outcomes piece of this. Do you imagine that you will build that right into the same dashboard area?
I don't know exactly what it's going to look like. There are talks about communicating it within the dashboard. Like, if we go back, if you want to scroll back to the graduation page really quick, just as an example, that'll, he's very familiar with this. I know Craig, you can't see this, but I think it's the second to last slide in the presentation, graduation rates. There is potentially room within here to illustrate that. Or it is something that we can build into the Accra dashboard. Might be the right platform for it. We aren't really sure. But the idea that if you're looking at data about our organization, we need to help anybody contextualize that according to the key initiatives that we care about most as an organization. So whether it's specifically within the Interactive Dashboard or Accra, or maybe on the landing page itself, we haven't really set up the kind of community format for it. We just know that it's a priority at this point. But look for more information on that as we move forward.
I think the most logical place would be on the Accra, because that's where we have the specific strategies for the strategic plan and the different action steps, and developing maybe a link that takes us into the data points that show.
Yeah, that Accra page is really designed in some ways to be that, because it speaks about those strategies. One of the challenges that we have with the Accra page, which we're looking to find ways to navigate, is that it's not incredibly programmable. And I need somebody with Chris's expertise or Greg's. Oh, Chris's, yeah, expertise. But it really is not an incredibly programmable page. We can't really manipulate it in great detail. But yeah, that would be the ideal place for it, because that's what we're really talking about, those strategies and kind of our effort in progress toward achieving.
And when we talk, that may be the public-facing side. And then on the internal-facing side, with the interactive piece, we can build, I don't know, the technology, a landing point. But we could probably build something internally that will help us to do that. And then what is on the public-facing is the end result.
Question?
So I echo the need for those key outcome indicators to be the front and center. And with those, not just the data, but what the target is. So you can see where we are and where we're trying to get to, or whether we achieved it. So that's point one. Point two is that I think through the school report, you know, having some context. You know, so for key outcome data, we can say our goal is X, and we know where we're at. And that tells you, you know, where we are. For other data, there's potentially comparison, you know, how do we compare? And so what is going to be done with that? I think the school report card, you can get into other districts and do that. But that's a need, you know. If the answer is, we want to be at X, we want to be better than something else. So that would be my second comment. And then the third is that there has been work done on the finance side to kind of nurture along some financial metrics that have comparisons to other districts, et cetera, et cetera. The tip of them are in here, but what is the plan to bring them, or is that a separate thing?
Well, that's where the landing page comes in, and also possibly Accra. Christian was actually looking at that. We have a report from the business office that we're looking to integrate into this, so that it is available as well. Thank you.
Would it be possible to, so there's not a redundancy, but the comments and questions that have come from CCB, to bring those forward to the full board, so there's ability to see the discussions that have gone on there, which include comments from staff, students, and community members as well. I think that could help drive the conversation.
Because that's what's influenced some of the procedure.
And to the outcomes piece, even though it's tricky and we're not ready to have that as a part of the either the interactive or the forward-facing, for the purposes of the board, and I think for CCB as well, but having those outcomes as a part of our conversations. Because we talk about them, and it has been a fairly, fairly general conversation. And I think the more we can start to have an idea of what exactly we're talking about, so we're all talking the same language would be helpful. So a list or, you know, however we're looking at it. I know it's by the different priorities, but to be able to start to think about, I think that would inform the process too. Any other questions on that? Craig, do you have any other questions, comments?
No, no good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.